Reached the 10 o'clock hour. It is Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Delnort and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said board still acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate public and staff availability. I'm going to call this meeting to order, and Kylie, would you take role?
Supervisor Borges?
Here.
Supervisor Howard?
Here.
Supervisor Starkey?
Here.
Supervisor Wilson?
Here.
Chair Short.
I am here. If you would all please join me in a moment of reflection. Thank you. Supervisor Wilson, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have anything to report out of closed session? Jackie, do we have anything? Thank you. Force to have it, force to have it. Do we have any deletions or corrections or additions from the board members to the agenda today? Okay. I skipped introduction of new employees. Neil, do we, do we have any new employees this morning?
Yes, looks like we have the Director of Child Support Services here.
Very good.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Elizabeth Holloway, Director of Child Support. I'm here to introduce Deana White, our newest child support assistant. She's been with us about three weeks, and she's doing great.
Welcome, Deana.
Happy to be here. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming and seeing us. We appreciate that.
All right.
Okay. Seeing no others, we'll move down and receive other brief reports or announcements from supervisors. Supervisor Starkey, you want to kick us off?
Okay. So, the last two weeks was fairly busy. After our last meeting, we attended our reaching rural retreat where we finalized our two-page draft proposal to the federal government, and that's who we're going to be presenting the information to in December when we go back out there for that final presentation. So, we got together down at the Rec Qua Inn, and we had breakfast together, and we created the draft for that project, which still remains to be a mobile methadone-assisted treatment program. Through that, I learned, because I learned firsthand, that Last Chance Grade is now open for two lanes. It is the first time in probably eight years, eight to 10 years, that this has been open to two lanes, and it's a beautiful sight to see. So, congratulations to Caltrans and all the contractors that made that happen. And now is the big work where we start to find that bypass, which we're working on among Congressman Huffman's stakeholders group, and we will continue to work on, on finding a permanent solution. I attended the local behavioral health board meeting, and I'm going to just briefly go through it. There was so much at this meeting that was updated to us, but I feel it's my obligation to let the rest of the board and the community know what was going on there. Care court update. Five counties rolled out last week the mandatory response, and we are all now paying attention to those counties and how they are addressing care court, because we are going to be expected to do that in December of 2024. So, it is very important that we learn from them as they're rolling out care court, which is essentially where we can conserve the very severe mentally ill individuals and oversee them so that they get the help that they need. That's a state mandate. The Bridge Housing Grant was awarded, and that is for housing for chronically homeless individuals, and that will, behavioral health has done an excellent job locating residences so that we can have rooms available for them, but we are also looking into shared housing and motels. Mobile Crisis Care Unit, this is one of my favorites. It's still progressing. We are still working on that. That is planned to roll out in July of 2024. That Mobile Crisis Unit will hopefully be responding to the crises in the field so that we can cut back on some of the need to send people to jail or to the ER. And that's, that's the hope of this program, but we're combining that with the final update, and that is an empath unit at Sutter Coast Hospital. And what that is, is if the people are going to the hospital because they're 51-50, it provides a safe space in which they can kind of decompress and, not decompress, I don't think that's the right word, but to come up with ways in which to calm down. The success of this is that far less people are going to need for acute care out of the area. So, these two things, the Mobile Crisis Unit and the Empath Unit, are really going to help us decrease the amount of people that we need to serve outside of the community, which is very costly. I met with True North regarding the SURF funding, and the SURF is Community Economic Resilience Fund Program. True North is now involved, and it's about how four counties, the Humboldt, Delnort, Lake, and Mendocino, how we can work together on regenerative farming and regenerative ways in which we can be self-sustainable as a community, as a region, and there's a lot of funding available for that. I attended the city council meeting. I attended a meeting with the Humboldt-Delnort Film Commission. I attended a briefing on the Middle Mile Advisory Committee, and that is something that we should really be paying close attention to, and I'm certainly happy that we have a wonderful IT director with Dan, so that before the state had already promised us 81 miles, 81 miles, you're going to get 81 miles of broadband. The last month in July, the last meeting that we had, they said, well, we're going to give you 53 miles, and Phase Two will be that additional, that additional time, or the additional miles. We threw a fit, and they are now back to giving us 81 miles, and so we need to just make sure that they are, they're proposing a joint build with another company. So, we just need to make sure that we are staying on top of that other company to make sure that they give us our 81 miles, is essentially, broadband for all, and we need it here in Delnort County. I attended the Delnort County Planning Commission meeting. That was very eye-opening and enlightening. And I also attended the Resilient Donato Meeting. Again, can't say enough about that group of people that are in that organization. They're really working on a program called Unite Us, which would help us all identify where everybody is getting the services so that we're not duplicating services. That's a big push for them, and I'm excited about that. I attended and assisted with Sea Cruise, a lot of behind-the-scenes work. That was a wonderful event. It's very successful. I met with the city regarding animal services and dispatch services, along with Supervisor Short. And then what, what took up a lot of my time this last two weeks, obviously, was the inaction that the board had with the bridge program that would have allowed for vaccines for uninsured people. And uninsured people in this community represent 8.4% of our community, that's 2,200 people, that were not, will not have access to those free vaccines now through this particular program. So, I spent a lot of time on the phone with our state representatives, with local doctors, with our public health doctor, trying to find ways in which we could possibly bring in those same services just without the funding that that bridge program would have allowed. And that is my report.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson, you got anything? No? Borges? No? Supervisor Howard?
Yeah, absolutely. The, let me turn on my microphone first. So, there's still quite a bit going on with the fire and the after-effects from it. Trying to get things wrapped up, we're now into our fifth inter-agency task force team on the fire, and the ramifications from it that we felt during the power outage are still alive and well. Looking to push forward issues with CALOES, specific to not only the results of the fire and the economic impacts of it, but also with the salmon season closure and also the August 21 closure of the groundfish season, created what I've been referring to with the CALOES Director Nancy Ward and also their Deputy Director Ryan Burris as a perfect storm for this community when it comes to economic development. We got hit pretty hard here, and we're not going to recover anytime shortly. And what I'm trying to emphasize to them as we start seeing some movement with the feds, with the salmon disaster declaration, which we hope to hear from in the next two to three weeks, is that we also need to get on the ball, which we'll see on the agenda today with the groundfish closure, and then continue to push actively on this fire piece. When we lost power in this community, the number of businesses that are affected was substantial. Rumiano Cheese has reported some of the most substantial losses I've seen. And as you know, they're a national distributor of some of the most high-end dairy products in this nation, but they're not the only ones. And yet, right now, there's not a funding source to help come in and relieve the backfill from what they saw with those losses. And so, conversations I had again this morning with Ryan Burris, who's the Deputy Director, was to try to get some people up here ASAP from his office to work with our staff to try to get some leases, loans from SBA on the federal side to help these guys shore up what they lost during these horrific fires. But that only hits the forced fire issue. It does not hit the salmon issue, and it does not hit the issues with the groundfish closure, which we continue to talk about and will talk about today. You know, Ryan wanted to have some data, and there's a lot of data out there. I think Alec Domka from the University of California Cooperative Extension put it into a really good perspective for us here with his report that he did through some surveys with the Chamber of Commerce. The average income here for folks in Delnort County was about $2,059 a month. People in this survey reported losses for that period of time during the fire of $1,790. So, they're barely making ends meet as it is, and you complicate various disasters like with the fire, and it really has a hard impact. With businesses, and this is just an average, it takes Rumiano into account, larger businesses and smaller tourism-related businesses, 6371 was the impact that they saw from the fire. And so, we really need to stay on top of this as a board and continue to push with our legislators and also CALOES, who has direct connections with the folks there at the federal level, in trying to make a lot of these pieces work. And I'm trying to quickly understand how that happens and, more importantly, fill in some capacity issues that we have in our staffing to deliver on those services that we promised to our community during hard times. Also wanted to make mention, as a result of the fire, we know the moratorium has gone into effect for insurance, so there's a one-year freeze. A lot of folks in this area have been affected by it. We have seen some notices go out, so there is a recourse for that. If you're willing to get on the phone, call the Department of Insurance, Ricardo Lara's office. They could help you navigate some of these issues. We also hope to have some one-on-ones with his office staff up here in Delnort County soon. But I did want to make mention also about a lot of elk conversations both Supervisor Borges and I are having with those agenda items that are on our schedule today, both for some wildlife conflicts that we see on our state highway system, but also support of our elk management unit plan for both Humboldt and Delnort County that I think is a large step, if we could advocate for it not only at a local level but at a state level. And last, I'll end with an interesting but piece with the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority and a potential bid that could come in alongside Contour for our essential air service contract from Advanced Air. A fairly nice-sized plane, similar-sized jet-engine aircraft. My hope is that they put in a solid bid, because we might see some better performance that we've seen here in the past year and a half that has resulted in a lot of people feeling very soured to fly and use our local airport. So, that's the end of my report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much, Supervisor Howard. Going to move on to the consent agenda at this time. Going to start with public comment on the consent agenda. Is there any public comment at this time on consent agenda items only?
I'm not the public, but I did want to point out one error that I made in the staff report regarding Washington, and has a date of October, September 26, and ought to say that I would like to close the project out at our next board meeting, so.
Thank you, John, for that clarification. Should say October 26 rather than September 26.
Regarding numbers four and five, specifically four, talks about enhanced cybersecurity protection. My technology has been completely hacked for two and a half years. I've been actively hacked at your library where my computer, somebody is, you could tell when it's actively hacked, where your screen's scrolling down, webpages have been created. That also happened previously when I left here. So, this is a serious issue when someone who's a victim of the COINTELPRO terrorism like me by the FBI and police, where police and FBI and Fed intel agencies can actively hack our tech. So, I can't even send an email or something without knowing if it's being secured or not, because my technology has been intercepted. Any form of communication, cards switched out that have numbers where it's a COINTELPRO op and not, for example, the mayor of Roseville, who I tried to talk to. So, when targeted individuals like me of COINTELPRO and police can be actively hacked and evidence suppressed and me being stopped from even getting an email out to get assistance to people who do care, which there are a lot of, that's a serious problem. That's not democracy. That's tyranny. It's authoritative technocracy.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the consent agenda? Can't close the public comment at this time. Bring it back. Bill? Hello, Robert. Sorry about that.
I just want to say that the minutes, looking over the minutes, I think they're kind of brief. You know, we'd had the public hearing for the budget, and so we're, you know, receiving the minutes on that, and very, very brief description of what happened there, you know, which I thought was a pretty brief process that was underutilized. And then the minutes, you know, don't include, I think Supervisor Starkey had some, made some mentions about the process. I looked into kind of what's included with minutes, and, you know, we kind of take the, I guess, the Roberts rule of that. But I think as far as the, like a budget hearing, I think it should have been a little bit more robust, including the minutes that we're accepting on the consent agenda today. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Okay.
Motion's approved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay. We're going to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Board of Equalization and consider the approval of the withdrawal request for the application for change of assessment for APN 118-390-021. That's the quality in for roll year 2021, 22, and 2022, 23. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment. I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll motion to approve.
You have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second? Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Item 16 on the agenda is approve and authorize the chair to sign the stipulation agreements with Payless Drug Stores. That's APN 118-100-023 for roll years 2020 to 2021, 21 to 22, and 22 to 23, as requested by the assessor. Is there any public comment on this item? Yes. Could you step up to the mic, please, so people that are online can hear you?
I'm trying to follow your agenda.
Oh.
And I was wondering when public comment could be, it looked like it was item number...
That public comment is usually a timed item, and it's coming up at 10:25.
Okay, so it will be at 10:25?
Yes.
Okay, so you jumped down to the Board of Equalization from there?
Correct.
Okay.
Because we haven't reached that time yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the clarification.
No problem. Okay, bringing it back to the board. Is there a motion for discussion?
I'll move to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Second that.
And a second? Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Starkey?
Oh, yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay. Going to adjourn as the Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, and we're going to work on item number 17, and that is authorize the chair to send a comment letter to the Northern Region of the California Department of Fish and Wildlife regarding the North Coast Roosevelt Elk Management Unit Draft Refined EMU Plan as requested by the Natural Resources and Environmental Coordination Technical Advisory Committee. Good morning, Heidi.
Good morning. Thanks for having me here today. Included in your packet was, of course, the board report that explained what the management plan was all about. There's also a comment letter that is attached, and if you have any technical questions, I would defer to Supervisor Howard. He's our subject matter expert on the elk.
Very good. Okay. Thank you, Heidi.
You're welcome.
First, we'll take public comment on this item. Is there any public comment? Okay. I'll bring it back to the board for any discussion or questions.
If, unless there's questions, I'll just make a very brief comment. This is the most proactive I've seen the Department of Fish and Wildlife in quite some period of time really take a headstrong approach as the elk populations continue to grow, not only here in, in Delnort but also in Humboldt, and really proactively trying to work with the community to figure out how best to manage populations that are really starting to occur, the majority of which on private lands. And so, when you have that conflict, we really need tools in the toolbox that those tools are given to us by, in this case, the California Fish and Game Commission through regulation and policy. And so, these, this guidance document, which I hope is adopted not only by us but in addition by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Commission, I hope we can advocate for it at a state level because it really goes a long way to resolving a lot of issues that I think we've seen here in the county in the past with that elk and human conflict, which happens quite a bit on a daily basis. But unless there's any questions, that's really what I wanted to see.
Thank you, Supervisor Howard. Supervisor Starkey?
I do have just one quick question. On objective number 3.2, it talks about mitigating vehicle and elk collisions. I'm just curious, how many are we seeing in Delnort County on that a year?
You know, Carrington Helson, who's our lead elk management biologist for Humboldt, Delnort, and Mendo, I believe last year was in the neighborhood of 26 or 27, but I could be wrong about that. I'd need to double-check. And I know we've had quite a bit already this year. Obviously, the property damage from things like that is quite substantial and potentially loss of life from an animal that large going through your windshield. But the, the next item on the agenda helps to address some of that with advocacy at a state level for funding to really help find some corridors for these critters to best walk between their habitats.
I was, I was pleased with the position letter that we got and advocating for many of the points that are problematic, especially in the, and I know District 5, we have a lot of, I received a lot of complaints about having those large herds coming into the private property and destroying, damaging, and sometimes even eliminating their landscaping and the things that they put in, you know, gardens and other things. And it's, it's gotten worse progressively over the last few years as those herds have grown, and having methods in there for private property owners to, to try to kind of prevent a lot of that from, from occurring and, and having those measures in there, as well as having the taking. Numbers go up substantially, because I think that's going to be beneficial to the herd growth and regulating these, these expanding herds. So, it was good to see that and support it.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson.
Yeah. I really appreciate those comments, Supervisor Wilson. There was a time here less than 10 years ago that we really had to push strongly for the department even to have an elk season through the share programs, through the Northwest Hunt, and even PLMs in our own backyard to get some reduction in numbers. We're seeing those numbers go down a lot quicker with a hoof disease called TAD, is the short for it, as you've seen in the report, go down a lot quicker, but it hasn't done much to actually alleviate the conflicts that we're seeing. Sorry, Chair Short.
No, no, that's, that's great. I was just going to comment that I was talking to somebody that lived out in the Burks Track, and, and the, the years gone by, there was only the one herd that kind of hung around where the, where the casino is now and Ender's Beach Road, but now there is another distinct herd that, that is living in the Burks Track. So, yeah, those, those herds are growing, so I'm happy to see this item. Okay. I don't believe I've gotten a motion to...
Move to approve.
To authorize. So, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay. Now, we have reached the 10:25 hour. It is time for our general public comment period. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a
If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, please hold your comments until the board takes up that matter, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Is there any public comment? General public comment?
Yeah, I want to talk about the psychopathic behavior of your police and sheriffs who will not stop harassing me. You mentioned 5150s. What about illegal and invalid 5150s? Like I was kidnapped under after long-term torture and terrorism, and as I have stated, this began way before lights, years before lights with Roseville PD. Where every box is checked, no is a danger to self and others. I had no suicidal ideation whatsoever, and I want to know if this board can explain how police can write that they found guns in a home when I lived with somebody who was on felony probation for having an illegal firearm. He would have been arrested on the spot. The FBI and police have been trying to kill me for two and a half years via COINTELPRO suicide. And before I was kidnapped, a COINTELPRO operative in the apartment below, when I was crying and gagging in the shower, said, "Is she gone yet?" So your sheriffs will not stop harassing me, and they will not stop, people who are paid in this community will not stop reinforcing the heinous kid narrative that your school district has been a part of. There's a theme kept on sexuality, sex themes, pornography, and it's constantly being reinforced by even a paid antagonist at the airport who talks in a disgusting manner about feminine hygiene and baby diapers. This is what this sadistic Nazi-like brain experimentation can do, extract innocent memory of someone changing a baby diaper, and synaptic crossing and overload, brain rewiring, neuronal encoding that's preceded by extensive gaslighting, isolation, torture. How can you all be a part of this? And are you going to lie to me and say that you don't know anything about the false terrorism threat alert, spy alert, that the FBI and police did in June 2021? Did you receive any information about that false threat alert? We all know everyone did. Everyone knows I'm innocent. The American people are being lied to, so I challenge the FBI, Christopher Wray, Sean Reagan, Roseville, any federal agency, any police agency, why don't we use nanobio tech brain-to-computer interface on them to see that these heinous narratives were intended? That what's being done to me was intended and started years before lights. What is everyone afraid of, to find out who the police really are? It's a parallel system of government that unfortunately uses firemen, ambulance drivers, hospitals, businesses. Do you find it concerning that Sutter is referred to as Slaughter Coast? Is that funny? Is it funny that people are kidnapped on illegal and invalid 5150s and their lives are destroyed? What is being done to me is so sadistic, I use the adjective evil, and I will be sending another email to talk about the elder abuse and child abuse that I witnessed occur in your jurisdiction, starting with Janet Altman, Sarah, Mike, and Robin.
Thank you. Any other public? I'm sorry, turn on my mic there. Any other public comment?
Good morning. My name's Helen Duvernay, and I'm here to address the non-action of the board at the last meeting to approve the free federal funding for COVID-19 shots for those who can't afford it and who are not insured. I'd like to tell you a brief story. In the late 1970s, I was employed as a research tech in a laboratory trying to isolate mRNA, messenger RNA, from animal tissue, pancreas. And we lost all of our funding practically overnight because a little small company called Genentech chemically synthesized DNA for human insulin through recombinant DNA technology. It was a first. They did a public offering, they made billions of dollars, and eventually they were acquired by a very familiar company called Pfizer Biotech. So that was 40-plus years ago, and Pfizer Biotech has had this technology and has used it to create quite easily and quickly, because they had in-house experts for the last decades, a vaccine. That is an mRNA vaccine that creates a very pure product that triggers the body to fight off the COVID-19 vaccine. Folks who don't have the background are somewhat afraid of this, they've come up with various stories because they don't understand, but most people don't know this has been going on for the last 40 years. Now, Genentech made human insulin using their technology, and most of the prescriptions for insulin now are using that technology. Bovine and pork, not pork, porcine sources are not as favorable, it's not as pure a product. So if folks had been a little afraid about DNA technology back in the late 1970s, we wouldn't have that right now. So I'm looking at it from the perspective of having seen all this and experienced it firsthand to know that this is not something to be afraid of. On a fiscal basis, I think it's irresponsible to turn down free money to assist 8-point-something percent of the population, 2,200 people, who cannot afford or are not offered insurance, health insurance through their employment or any other means because they're not poor enough for medical, and who would find the shot itself very expensive. I also think it's somewhat morally questionable that you're taking away the power of choice for these folks who would appreciate being able to choose whether they want to get the shot. They're not being forced, but the money's there, and I think Supervisor Howard mentioned the money's a little tight right now. So why are you turning this down and not even voting on it? Thank you.
My name is Beverly Brand.
Good morning.
Good morning. Supervisor Starkey, I'd really like to thank you for standing up for our neighbors who need a COVID shot but don't have the health insurance to help pay for it. It shows your compassion and your respect for the individual choices of your constituents. But to the rest of the board, I have to say how deeply disappointed I am in your lack of action on this issue. You have the opportunity to help people at no cost to the county, yet you just sit there and say nothing. Now, I wonder if the state were offering to pay for vaccines of any kind, and if I were uninsured and I needed a flu shot, or I needed a shingles vaccination, or protection against tetanus, or pneumonia, or measles, or diphtheria, would you still say, "No, we won't allow the state to help you out"? Is it all vaccines, or is it just the COVID vaccine that excites your animosity? It seems to me that either way, what you have done is turned what ought to be a personal choice into a cheap political stunt. It's petty, it's childish, and it's mean-spirited, but you can reconsider. You can put this on a future agenda, and you can vote on it. I want to know who amongst you supports our neighbors and who does not.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for the time, and I'll try and be brief. Just to express, first of all, how personally I am disappointed in that something that was just simply suggested at your last meeting, that we have a discussion about BAP, the Bridge Access Program, for those who can't afford or have access to COVID. And I know we have an outspoken member here amongst you who believes that COVID-19 and the incarnations that we're being given now to guard us against it is some kind of experiment. Well, it's been a great experiment, had it four times, never felt better, and I think everyone should have access to that choice, and BAP was about choice. It's got nothing to do with being told what you're going to do with your life, and I don't care what kind of crazy science anyone is going to listen to or subscribe to. I think we have someone running for president who subscribes to the same nonsense. I find it obnoxious that it's not put to the adults, the 2,200 people, the 8.4%, let them make that choice. And thank goodness, we did have a white knight who helped us, and it's nice. So for me, this is a matter of pure principle. Someone makes a motion to discuss this, and nothing but crickets during the last session. Sickening, and I know you're all better than this. Thank you.
I tuned in last week, and I said I was going to bring you these guys. Something of the sentiment of these guys is everything's a political stunt with you guys, and she can't get a second for nothing, on nothing. For what reason, I don't know, but it is 70 million to 80 million to 100 million to 120 million, what, $210, $220 million budget that none of you believe in. You know, you got a $40 million general fund, and I started thinking, why can't a house plant replace what you guys are? I think you're a symbolic gesture, you know? I think most of you think you're doing like a ceremonial role, but it's costing us thousands, tens of thousands of dollars in unfunded pension debt to put you guys up here, and it's costing us CalPERS contributions that aren't making it up so many of the unfunded pension debt. And you guys aren't in your offices on any given day, and yet we're paying you. Like, what'd you say the average pay was, like $2,000 a month? I looked it up, Googled it while you said it. You're right, and last meeting you objected to $25 hour minimum wage for healthcare workers. You know, that you guys make more than that in unfunded pension debt. You won't even do the math on your own thing, and then you wouldn't even do an open budget hearing. You know, the one year we had an open budget hearing, we had two females on the Board of Supervisors, and I don't want to be sexist, but what the hell, you know? You guys don't have calculators? I couldn't find calculators with balls on them, so I didn't order them for you. I did get you su, oh shit, these are my fishing nets. Okay, I'm keeping the fishing nets. I did get you guys, I couldn't find Miracle Grow, because I think it would be a miracle to save you guys, and it's up going to be up to the clerk of the board to do it. She's going to have to water the supervisors, and so I found Job's fertilizer spikes for beautiful supervisors. And I tried, I tried, I didn't water these things for two weeks, but they still look pretty good. I did get two hanging plants for our law folks. I got Dean a Golden Pothos, and he's the only one there's any science in because I did a BuzzFeed personality quiz to find out what house plant he was. The rest of you guys, I won it. A money tree for Chris, Venus flytrap, your snake plant, Darren, because you went back to supervisor who's been trying to make an alliance with you for the last couple of years on stupid shit like adding up numbers and crap. You can do an open budget hearing, it's no big deal. Some of the systems aren't working that well, so you might want to see what you're spending your money on. I don't know what happens to politicians, it just happens everywhere, no matter how small it is. We could give you guys nothing, and you guys could volunteer, and you guys would still become yourselves. I'm hoping that the clerk of the board will water and feed you and save the representation of our community. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Linda Lamar, and like some of the previous speakers today, I wanted to revisit the COVID Bridge Access Program that really is a vital necessity to this community. One of the things, one of the principles, or many of the principles of democracy are citizen participation, equality, political tolerance, accountability, and transparency. And somehow, this item was put on a consent agenda, but normally, not, items that are non-controversial are placed on the regular agenda. So, or anyway, so back it up, I think we need to revisit this. I'm asking you, as the representatives of our small community, to take this item, put it back on an agenda, open it up to the public for discussion, and you can deliberate and get more facts about how the benefit of this money will help our community, and hopefully that will be something you consider. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Deborah Wakefield, and I wasn't born in Delnart County, but I've been here for over 70 years. So I have charged a lot of windmills here in Delnart County. I've put myself on the line a lot of times, but in the last few years, I've kind of backed off a little bit until something really big comes up, like, oh, say, a big fire, and then I'm back in the Office of Emergency Services and putting in hours and hours and hours. So I kind of feel like what happened on your last meeting is one of those things I can't ignore. I felt like a little bit of a slap in the face as a citizen of Delnart County because all of a sudden it felt to me like everyone in Delnart County wasn't being offered their own choice. Two or three years ago, when we had the big pandemic, I put hundreds of hours into helping people get shots, into running those clinics, because I believe in that. And I've sent a few texts out to some of our supervisors here. One of my supervisors told me it's not a philosophical issue, but it felt pretty philosophical to me. It felt philosophical when I was told the vaccine doesn't really work, so that's the reason why we want it off the consent agenda. I was told that there are other more effective ways to fight COVID than vaccines. That feels philosophical to me because it's certainly not fact, right? Okay? Also told that there was no purpose or benefit in these shots. And then the next thing that happens is no one seconds a vote on, are we going to accept the Bridge Access Program so that people can actually make their own choices? So what shouldn't be philosophical feels pretty philosophical to me. It's philosophical, I get, I have my own philosophy. The vaccines work, I worked hard to get thousands and thousands of people here vaccinated, but nobody that didn't want to be vaccinated. Well, I tried to push Darren a few times, but you know, I might have tried to put a little bit of push on some of that, but I backed off because it's your own decision, what you do. The reason I'm really here today is I feel like that decision has been taken away from our citizens. And, you know, just like the pandemic, I couldn't sit back and let it just watch it. Just like the forest fire, when they called and said, "Deborah, we need you," I couldn't sit back, I really wanted to. I had a generator at my house, I was going to be real comfortable. Same thing today. I can't stand sitting back when I see the citizens of our county not being offered their own free choice and free will, and it feels to me a little bit like other people's philosophies are then being forced on them. Thank you for your time, and I hope you reconsider that.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Susan Taylor. I'm a longtime resident too, and a really hard act to follow, but I am a retired teacher, 25 years in this district. Good morning, Joey and Garrett. And I have not been to one of your meetings before, so I'm a newbie, I didn't know the protocol or anything, so I have notes right here to keep to what I have to say. So much of what I'm feeling has been said by good speakers and very, Mrs. Duvernay's story was so factual. I am just confused as well why there wasn't some more further discussion about this access, let's see, I have to write it down, Bridge Access Program. I feel very strongly, because I have members of my own family who are, have healthcare issues, who are immunocompromised, and we have been diligent with our masks and with staying out of groups of people. And we have been diligent with our masks and with staying out of groups of people. And so when, when we hear that other people in the community are not going to be getting vaccinated because they can't, it worries me for my own family when we have to go to the grocery store or get out in the community. So I am here, I, I just feel like, shouldn't we as members of our community be, get, provide the best services and care that we can for all members of our community? Be the best that we can be? And if, if the shortage of manpower to deal with this is a problem, I just want to remind you, as Deborah pointed out, there was a stellar committee of volunteers who ran the whole thing at the fairgrounds. And I was out of town at the time, but when I came back to Crescent City, I got in line. And it was, it was so beautifully run. And it was all faces I'd seen who were retired people who put in their time to make sure that our community was served. So thank you for listening and please reconsider.
Thank you. Another member of the EOC. Good morning.
So my name is Sherry Weir. And I live in the county and I'm very, very nervous. I am not good at this at all. So I'm gonna keep it really short because these wonderful speakers before me did a wonderful job explaining how, how we feel. I'm very disappointed in the non-action that was taken. In my opinion, you are denying our vulnerable uninsured citizens a choice to get vaccinated or not. I feel that it's our bodies, our choice. Everyone has their own opinions, and I think that's great. But I don't think you should say that nobody in the county can have this program. And we have this wonderful opportunity to bring this funding to our community and help our citizens. And I just feel you're denying our choice. I just hope that you will reconsider. Please let us have the choice and bring the Bridge Access Program to our county. And please help the vulnerable uninsured people in our community. My voice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. Hi, Diana Clark. I guess, I, I feel the same way. The Bridge Access Program needs to be a choice for everybody. It's not your choice. It's the community's choice. And you would just be giving them that opportunity, that option. I'm looking at it from a hospital standpoint, the impact that these very sick people who get COVID come into the hospital, if you've seen somebody intubated, it's ugly. It's, it's horrific. It's something that you don't want to see. The vaccination keeps people from going to the hospital. That's been proven. It works. It needs to be brought to this community. We need to use it. We need to have it available. And those people who are uninsured would especially benefit from this. So please give them that, that chance. Get, put it back on the agenda. It's not that difficult. You can do it. Thank you.
Hello.
Good morning.
Last year, I had a lapse in my health insurance coverage and money was tight. But because our government was providing uninsured people with free COVID vaccines, I was able to make that choice for myself. The combinations of vaccines and masks have helped keep me safe and healthy during times where I could not afford to be sick. In this county, we have over 2,000 people that are uninsured. I am fortunate now to have health insurance, but those people do not and may struggle to pay for over $100 for a single vaccine. Do you believe that as county supervisors, you have the right to stand in the way of those 2,000 people making a decision about their health for themselves? To not even bring the state Bridge Access Program to a vote is an outrageous act of abandonment of that community. This is not a settled matter. Add voting on enacting this free program to your next agenda and give those 2,000 uninsured citizens their opportunity to make decisions for themselves without your ideologies treading on their freedoms. Thank you.
I almost hate to throw a curveball into the current parade of people that, for what is really interesting to me to have such a large group come to advocate for an issue when I sit in these board meetings, meeting after meeting, and very seldom do I ever see more than two or three members of the public appear at meetings when there are issues at each, each and every meeting which affect the public. And yet, the attendance is abysmal. In any event, I'm not here to talk about the COVID Bridge Program. I'm here to suggest that the county may wish to review the current activities going on on 199 in which citizens in this county are asked, and other counties are asked to caravan through approximately a 30-mile stretch of 199. And we're told we're being, we're doing this because it, it improves our, our safety in terms of, you know, I don't know who here on this board has driven that 30 miles. I have in the last two weeks, probably three or four times. And I can say that being bunched up in a 30 or 40 or 50-car caravan to, to try to negotiate that 30 miles is a scary proposition from the standpoint of not everybody drives the same way as each and each car. And I've witnessed, personally witnessed a number of incidents where there have been near collisions where people are not careful enough even in those circumstances. And currently, both lanes are open. There does not appear to be any evidence that there's any kind of impending disaster to visit the road. And I was wondering at what point we can dispense with this nonsense on 199 of having a caravan. Because I mean, in some cases, caravans are going in both directions at the same time. And like I say, it's not a particularly safe situation currently by the way that it's being handled. When is that going to end? Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Good morning. My name is Lupita Harris. And I've had the opportunity to work with some of you on different issues, and I'm very happy to do that. I'm hoping that you understand, at least I do, the heartfelt feelings of my colleagues here. I'm here to support them. I got a call last night and I thought, oh my goodness, this is important. And so, as this gentleman said, issues come up. This is an issue for our community. So again, I'm here with my colleagues to ask that you reconsider and adopt the Bridge Access Program. It's shameful that a motion died because of a lack of a second. Choice is a precious commodity these days. And every person has the right to choose whether or not they want to be vaccinated. Where, where's the justice when as representatives, you are choosing for your constituents to deny them a vaccine? It just doesn't seem fair. Especially when that choice was made because of a personal opinion. I might add that, that opinion came, what I feel, without evidence. And it's quite the opposite, as noted by the Nobel Prize winners of the 2023 in medicine. They were awarded Carrico and Weissman for the development of the effective mRNA vaccines against COVID-19. That is evidence. And I would really want this body to reconsider and adopt that program seriously. And I'm particularly reaching out to my supervisor here in front of me that I've supported on many issues. So thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning, Brian.
I seem to know every one of you. There's a couple of things I wanted to talk about. First of all, I would like to say thank you to Caltrans for getting 101 back and open. It's a benefit to our community. Just for the record, my name is Brian Stone. I'm County Harbor Commissioner. I'm here speaking on my own behalf and not of the harbor, just to say that. There's a couple of issues here. And I'm glad that this group brought the whole thing up about the Bridge Program. And I think it's important to the community to let them have a choice. That's all I'd like to say on that. I don't need to reiterate everything that's been said. The other thing is, is I'd like to thank Commissioner Howard for helping out when it comes to the redundancy issue with regards to bringing electricity and having a reliable source of energy that comes from a different source other than Pacific Power. So thank you very much for your work on that and for helping out. So that being said, I just simply would like to say, please bring back the discussion on the bridge loan. Okay, or I mean, the Bridge Program. Thank you very much for your time.
Any other public comment?
Good morning. My name is Michael Duval. I'm here to encourage the reconsideration of the Bridge Access Program. I was really quite dismayed to see a quote attributed to Supervisor Wilson. The quote, and I'll read it in its entirety. It is my definition, it is by definition, not a vaccine, though they call it that. There are and have been shown effective methods for treatment without having these shots being given and also with additional adverse reactions that have been noted and documented and proven from these shots. They have no purpose or benefit. Continuing utilization of an experimental that has been proven to be ineffective as far as prevention. Supervisor Wilson, it is not an experimental. It is not an experimental. It may be an emergency authorization, but it's not an experimental. These words have meaning. This opinion expressed to the press shames the entire county. I urge, and by, and by extension, unfortunately, it extends to the other board members who failed to offer the second. So I'm assuming that they don't want to share, be shared in that opinion of a perfectly suitable vaccine. It is a vaccine, by the way. And I wish for the reconsideration and I wish for the second to come swiftly when it is reconsidered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Chair, I have a hand raised online.
Okay, let's go ahead and go with that one.
Brandon, you are on, you just need to unmute your mic. Brandon, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. Thank you, Kylie. Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Supervisors. I appreciate you allowing me to comment. Unfortunately, I'm here to implore you to find your influence. And that doesn't mean sending Mr. Howard to the next CSAC meeting to advocate for his liberal, environmental, and so, social service indoctrination of state mandates. I have to ask, what are you doing? Are we just writing letters? You know, our county is represented by some of the worst statistics in the nation for crime, for poverty, for substance abuse. And yet here today, pretty much all on the regular session is elk management and our fisheries. And giving the state more entitlement to Delnart County. I implore you to find your influence and represent your constituents. The COVID is a delicate topic. And it's good to see people come out and speak. But where were you when government was threatening to take our jobs and abusing our children by not allowing them to attend school? Where was the choice then? It isn't emergency medicine. We don't know the ramifications of MN RNA, DNA. It should be for the healthcare service to find out, not for government to instill political will. California is implementing the most litigation and far-reaching legislation ever. And we're experiencing some of the highest inflation. The highest poverty we've experienced in our lifetimes. And I ask you to take responsibility for your actions. The money you spend is not just your money, it's the people's money. The consent agenda should not be consensual, and you're abusing it. We need to promote 199 and get the long overdue road improvements completed. Yeah, it's great last chance grade, has two-way traffic. What is the life expectancy of the newest wall? Three years, four years? Hopefully, it makes it through the winter. I encourage you to act and not just write letters. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Is there any others? Any others online?
No.
Okay. I will close the public comment period then.
Chair, may I have a minute?
Yes.
So given, given the discussion today or given the comments today, I, I am going to ask that this be re-added to the next agenda for us to be able to have an actual vote on.
Okay, I've, I understand what you're saying and I've listened to all the public comments here today. I was just going to explain to, you know, the members of the board and to the public here that there, that there is a process for this business meeting. I'm sure you all can understand that if we rehashed out every discussion because somebody in the public disagreed with our decision, that we would never get any work done. I'm sure that's pretty easily understood. So it, the, the, now if you, if I could finish my explanation here, if you'd let me. The, this, the lack of a second is an action of the board. It's an opinion of the board in whether that should, that item should go through or not. That being said, there is a process for bringing items back that have already been discussed. And that is a, a suspension of the rules, which ordinarily takes a four-fifths vote of, vote of the board to suspend the rules that, you know, the rules is that, you know, once an item has been acted upon, and that, again, that lack of a second is an action of the board. Once an item has been acted upon, a board member can explain their position there and then make a motion to suspend the rules. And then if that motion carries, then there will be a motion to reconsider if the board-- will be a motion to reconsider if the board so, so desires. And then that same item can be discussed again. So, it, whether it happens today or at a later meeting, that motion to suspend the rules could be discussed, and then a motion to reconsider could be discussed. But as the chair, the person that has the responsibility for forming the agenda and putting items on the agenda, I am not, in and of myself, going to negate what the board acted on and just put it back on the agenda of my own accord. This, this board does not act individually. It acts as a board, so.
The only thing I would like to say is, I do feel that this particular item was erroneously put on a consent agenda. This item has lots of controversy to it, and in my opinion and on my research with the local support, which I'm assuming you guys know by, it should have been an item on the regular agenda, voted to the government. There should have been discussion and deliberation, and then there should have been a vote.
So, there, there is now, just, just for the people that are listening in online, lady in the audience is saying that the motion, or that the item should not have been on the consent agenda, should have been in regular government items. But we need to reiterate that every item on the agenda can be discussed by the board and by the public, and this one was pulled by Supervisor Wilson, and so it came out of the consent agenda and was discussed. So, again, there is a process for bringing it back to the agenda if this board so desires. We can go by that process, which again is the motion to suspend the rules and then the motion to reconsider. But people are saying that there was a lack of action, like we didn't get the opportunity to act on this item, but that is, that is not how it truly is. The lack of a second is an action of the board, and that is why that item failed.
So, can I just get a clarifying from County Council? Is that permissible?
Could it?
I just want to clarify a question, is that can I make a motion to suspend the rules today, or does that need to be agendized?
You, you can do that at any time.
Okay. Then I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules and allow for this action item to come back on.
I, okay.
That's maybe a mistake.
But at a, at, at the next meeting, is, could you bring the item back?
I want to bring the item back.
Right, but we don't have the item in front of us with the information, so I would say that probably next meeting, if you plan on making that.
So, I can't make the motion to suspend the rules to bring the item back?
Well, then we would suspend it for this meeting.
I don't know what you're saying.
The, the action to reconsider is supposed to be done at that meeting, before that meeting closes. It could be done by any of the board members that were in the affirmative, not, so, so you understand where I'm at. If, if we made a motion, it was seconded, and it didn't carry, the person that voted against it couldn't bring it up for reconsideration, because then we would just be hashing it out again.
Can I just get clarification from County Council that that's accurate?
We understand your, where you're at, and I think that it's great that you would want to do that. I would just ask that you would clarify that with County Council between meetings and maybe bring it back at the next meeting. I, I understand that, I understand that we have none of the, the, the agenda items with us.
Okay, just so that, if the public is clear, I did ask Supervisor Short to put this back on. He told me no. So, I don't, I wish you would have explained that to me at the time that you said no, that you're not going to put it back on. I wish that you would have said, however, here's this other route. You're explaining that today. So, what is the next step? When can I ask to have the, the rules suspended in order for us to clarify when we can put this back on?
I would suggest that you did it with, at the next meeting, because then you would have time to bring the information about the item to the meeting with you so we could have a discussion. Do you understand that?
No, I guess I'm not, we have, we've had a discussion. We're hearing the discussion. We know the discussion. What, what more do we need? Every single one of us got, how, how many emails did we get and phone calls? We know the issue. So, what, what is it you're suggesting that I do?
You can make, you have the choice now. I was just simply suggesting to bring the, the narrative about the item to the board so they could consider it.
Okay.
But if you would like to do that now, then you can.
I'd like to make the motion that we suspend the rules and we bring this item back for discussion and a vote. That's what I'm saying. I'm, that's what I'm asking.
We are, she is, she is making a motion to suspend.
My suggestion is that, you know, you give some time for this to be looked into because I'm, I'm, it seems a little ambiguous as to whether or not, when it can be brought back, whether the second really is a motion by the board. There's a lot of issues at play right here, and I would suggest that you give it some time so that it can be thoroughly analyzed instead of talked about here on the spot.
No, but can she just bring it back, the motion to bring it back to another agenda? We don't have to have discussion today.
In answer to your question about it not being on the agenda, that's why I mentioned that it took a four-fifth vote to suspend the rules. It basically becomes one of those urgency items. But just simply a motion by someone who didn't agree to bring it back to the agenda is not appropriate.
So, County Council's saying they are unclear if the consent has to be reconsidered?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Loopy. I couldn't, I couldn't hear you.
Is County Council saying that they are unclear on the motion to suspend and motion to reconsider at this time, and that further clarification needs to be made so that we do this properly?
Yes.
So, given that information, I think we should follow advice there.
Thank you, Loopy. Is that your desire to?
Well, that's what I asked for originally. I asked for County Council to weigh in, so, yes.
Okay. So, we will end this discussion and move on to our 10:30 timed item, which is receive an update from the St. George Reef Lighthouse Society. John Zimmerman, by John Zimmerman, a president of the St. George Reef Lighthouse Preservation Society.
What are you sleeping?
Yes, thank you, John. We'll give them a couple of minutes to, to clear the room as they desire.
Talk about clearing your room.
Not the only delivery mechanism in this county. Easy now.
Can I start now?
John, you can start whenever you'd like. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. My name is John Zimmerman. I'm the president of St. George Reef Lighthouse Preservation Society, and seeing as the five of you are landlords, I thought you'd like to have an update on what's going on out there. We had a very successful tour over the Labor Day weekend. We transported approximately 121 people out there to see the lighthouse, and we had 24 volunteers that are associated with the organization that were docents, ground crews, and work individuals out there helping to clean up the lighthouse and get it ship shape for the, for the tour. Part of the reason why I'm here, last, last February, we got a $19,000-plus grant, and I wanted to let you know how it was utilized. We brought out a consultant from New York State who specializes in restoring lighthouses all over the country, and we want to get a blueprint forward that's well thought out to proceed with the restoration process of St. George Reef Lighthouse. That consultation cost approximately $5,900, and I think it was money well spent. The guy spent two days going from top to bottom, checked everything out. He's going to write us a report of suggestions that we can write grants off of, and when we get the report, I will see to it that each and every one of you have a copy of it so you know what, what his report entails. Our liability insurance that we're required to carry is about $2,840. Storage unit is $1,296, and the transportation to the lighthouse, we took about a quarter of what we spent over four days, which actually totaled $45,600. We portioned $11,400 that went with our total expenses for the grant. So, your grant basically took care of all of those expenses, and we really appreciate the money. It went a long way to helping us out. Our future plans, once we get the report, of course, is I'm going to be working on grants with the help of Toddine Andrew over there and Taylor Andrew, who are on our board. And this November, we're going to be going back out to the lighthouse, weather permitting. We're going to have a small tour, and we're going to be going out there and working on more cleanup and working on restoring the light again. We've had some problems with the electrical out there. We're planning also to have a spring cleanup, probably in March. We're going to be contacting the National Guard. Hopefully, they'll be able to airlift some of the debris off the lighthouse and bring it to shore as an exercise. Next Memorial Day, we're planning a tour, and then next Labor Day, a tour, and then hopefully November, again, have another work party out there. We get out there every quarter to start with, and then hopefully, once the grants come in, we'll be able to spend a lot more time out there working on the lighthouse. So, that's basically what we got going on, and I'd like to make a point to come in here at least twice a year or more, if you want me to, to just let you know what's going on with the lighthouse. And I would encourage each and every one of you, if you can make the time, to join us out there and see what, what we're doing out there.
That's great, John. I'd love to see you here a couple of times a year. I think it's great work that you guys are doing.
So, when can we see you out there?
If we want to go, do we call this number on the back of your flyer?
Yes. You'll be getting ahold of me.
Good deal.
What do tours cost these days?
Our landlords go out for free because they own the property.
Well, that should not be occurring.
Well, no, 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 seriously. I mean, it's, it belongs to the county. The county needs to be made aware of what's going on out there.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a gratuity. It's important that you know what's going on. But the tours are $350.
$350, okay.
That's in your district, right?
No, I don't believe, I think it's now in Joey's district.
Oh, is it Joey's district?
Yeah, that's his now. I lost it in the redistricting. What I want to say is thank you. Thank you for this, because this brings just one more layer of things that people can do and see in our communities. It's historic information that we can be proud of. I am so happy to get feedback on that pilot program that we offered for the grants that went out, that you utilized that money to your advantage, that we were able now to, to kind of re-energize getting out there. I know COVID probably took a hit for a lot of it.
A major hit.
Yes. So, this is exciting to me. I'm, I'm very thrilled to see it, and I appreciate all the hard work that you and your staff and everyone puts into this, so.
Well, I, I want to say one last thing. The, everybody on the board and every volunteer views the lighthouse as belonging to the public. You know, we're just, we're just holding the keys to go in and out and, and, and take care of something that belongs to everyone. And anyway, that, the five of you, if you have any connections with anybody in the state or federal government, and they have a few million dollars laying around that they don't know what to do with, we could sure use it. So, but I do encourage you to come out and see it. I mean, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to see something like that. And Delnard County has a lot to be proud of, having two really important lighthouses, Battery Point and St. George, although no matter how low the tide is, you can't walk out to St. George. You can't, Battery Point.
So, John, can you touch on the tours just a little bit? How, is there, you, you fly out there a certain amount of time and then fly back? What, how does the, what does the tours look like?
Yeah, the, the tour, when you buy the ticket, you do get a round trip. There's no swimming back.
It's very nice to hear it. Thank you.
Getting out at $350.
Does that, does that depend on attitude or?
We try that if we could get away with it. You get out, it's a six-minute ride out there, and it goes right along St. George Reef, all the way out, so you get a million-dollar, I mean, even if you never got off the helicopter, just going out there is great fun. But we have docents in four different levels of the lighthouse, and you're escorted, because it is dangerous out there. You're escorted everywhere, and we take you down to the engine room. Well, you have the docent at the door that gives you a brief history of the lighthouse, and they take you down to the engine room. They give you a spiel on that, up to the galley, which is the kitchen, and they, they talk about that area. Then you go up into the lantern room, and you get to, get to go to the top and get a really nice view of the surrounding area. You know, on a clear day, you can see 25 miles. I mean, it's just unbelievable. So, they get a full tour of the lighthouse. They also get a membership with the tour, so that way, we got their number.
Great. Well, we appreciate you bringing the information to us, John.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any public comment on that presentation? Okay, can close public comment and get back to our regular items. I believe the next item is item number 18, which is approve and authorize the chair to sign a letter of support to be transmitted to the Wildlife Conservation Board for the North Coast US 101 Wildlife Crossing Project as requested by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. This was spoken to by Supervisor Howard a moment ago, and we have a motion to approve.
Second that.
And a second, is there any public comment on this item? Anybody online? Okay, seeing no public comment, we will close the public comment period. If you would pull the vote, Kylie.
Supervisor?
Oh?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, are there any specific locations within Delnard County that they're talking about having these crossings?
We, we, we need several in Smith River. Right now, they're, they're, the first they're working on is at the foot of Highway 101, right where the casino property is. That's where they've been looking at for a number of years. They haven't put these into effect in California yet. They've actually received dollars to do it down in Southern California. The Cougar story led the way with the funding for that half-billion-dollar project for a wildlife overpass. I don't know what something like that would cost here, but that's where they're currently looking for our area, and it's where a high rate of collisions are currently occurring. I don't know what's going to happen.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Or no, I'm sorry, we, that was, we already voted on that one. We'll move down to item number 19, which is authorize the chair to sign a letter requesting that the Six Rivers National Forest Supervisors open the Smith River National Recreation Area to the public where appropriate now that the Smith River Complex fire has been contained as requested by Supervisor Howard. Thank you for bringing this to the agenda, Supervisor Howard.
Yeah, it's just one thing, like a lot of things that we get constituent calls on. We have a very short season as far as for utilizing our forests, especially if you're a hunter, and there seems to be some reluctance right now in opening a broader range of our forested areas right now due to the lightning complex, which also contains our Smith River Complex. So, this, I hope, encourages Ted MacArthur, who's our district supervisor, to help make that decision.
Thank you. Supervisor Starkey?
My only question, I, I agree with this letter, but my only question is, what are some of the reasons why they're resistant to opening it back?
They believe, because they're implementing what they call the Bear Plan, and I can't remember the definition for the acronym, but basically shoring up, putting to bed roads, essentially with water bars, or falling hazard trees, or in this case, continued activity by fire crews within those areas that have burned. And so, they don't want to see a conflict, human-to-human conflict out there with hunters.
Which is a pretty good reason, but I understand.
Yeah.
I, I completely agree with the letter, because the letter is just saying, please consider it. This is really impacting the recreation in this area. So, I just understand that their reasoning for wanting to keep it closed has some legitimacy to it as well.
It is a valid concern, but as a hunter, it's, it's, there's logging operations that go on out there as well, and there's signage put up, and there's plenty of buffer put around.
Part of the problem is, for instance, we did not have fire up the go-rud yet. Areas of the go-rud are closed currently, and so it's a blanket, I mean, when we make a blanket overlay of our national forest, and especially in this case, our NRA, it really takes. takes the user groups, whether you're four-by-four or otherwise, out of the equation. And we hope to change a little bit of that with this letter.
Very good. Is there any public comment on this item? Hello, Toddine?
Hello, Toddine Andrew. As an owner of vacation rentals, we have seen a pretty dramatic drop in the number of bookings in October and November, late September. A lot of that was due to fire activity. Some of that is due to fishery issues as well. We would like to see those things get opened. It is impacting not just the recreational use, but also there's some other serious economic impacts for our tourism in the county as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Toddine. Any other comment?
Just since it was brought up, I just, as an owner of vacation rentals for Supervisor Howard, I always wonder if these things are conflicts of interest. I remember trying to open a road across from one of his riverfront properties. I just wonder, but I could be wrong.
Jackie, would you care to weigh in on the conflict of interest aspect? I mean, this is a letter to ask Six Rivers Forest to open up the National Recreation Area. I personally don't see how it would be a conflict, but...
More than happy to step out, Jackie.
I don't see how there's a conflict, you know, writing a letter. I don't see how there's any personal money gain that he has in it, or anything of that nature.
Thank you very much. I agree. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, going to close public comment and bring it back to the board.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Nothing, other than, again, for the purposes of putting the public... A lot of people have no concept of what just transpired with the fire up here in Delnor County. The news, media out there has been pretty much zero on the impacts of Delnor County, and so there is a misunderstanding of not only severity, but where. And so, you know, to promote and make sure that we continue to draw people to Delnor County, you know, to make sure we get the message out that the redwoods and the area that are parks that you want to come see, they were not touched by this fire to the extent. And so, all these places, like whether you're talking about the Avenue of the Giants, or whether you're talking about, you know, the Grove of Titans, or Boy Scout Trail, or all the places that people want to come see, Stout Grove, those are... were not impacted or affected by the fires, and they don't want to dissuade tourism from coming to Delnor County.
If I could just piggyback on that, we do have a Visitor Bureau meeting on Thursday, and one of our objectives and our goals is to make sure that we get that message out. And so, I do agree with you on that, because, you know, you see an area in, you know, another country, and you just assume that that's totally unsafe. You cannot go to Mexico, because there's one area in Mexico that's not safe. So, and it's the same kind of messaging. We want to make sure that people know, we are open for business. We are ready to have you come and enjoy our redwoods and our ocean and our rivers. So, I will reiterate that at our Visitor Bureau meeting on Thursday.
Thank you. Okay, Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay, item number 20, authorize the chair to, one, sign a letter requesting the governor to send a request to the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Commerce to declare a fishery failure for 2023 in California relating to the closure of the state's near-shore ground fish fishery in the Northern Management Area. And, two, sign a letter objecting to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife's near-shore ground fish fishery closure in the Northern Management Area. And, three, select and authorize a county supervisor to travel to the November Pacific Fishery Management Council meeting to present the county's position, as stated in the letters authorized by the board, as requested by Supervisor Howard. Supervisor Howard, you're a busy man.
Yeah, this is...
Thank you for bringing this.
This is one that both Supervisor Borges and I were assigned to by the board to track, and we came in late to the game, but as did many of us in California, we were caught off guard by the closure. It really speaks in this letter to what we've seen as management decisions based off of poor data. And poor data is essentially what's caused, in this case, the authority of the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to do a full closure, 50,000, 50,000s in where this species of quillback fish reside. But the full closure not only impacted recreation, also impacted commercial fisheries, and in doing so, shut down an entire state. We thought the salmon disaster enclosure was bad. The ground fish industry in the state of California in particular is quite a much larger, quite a bit larger than the salmon industry. The ramifications for what has been estimated by NOAA in 2016 to be close to $40 billion statewide has probably grown substantially since that point in time. In trying to understand this, I've had a great deal of conversations, as well as probably Supervisor Wilson, Supervisor Short, and Supervisor Borges, with many people in the state of California, from our state legislature down. And there is a willingness to change, but it's too late to impact our season. The decision's been made. There's no science to presumably support a reopening, so we've lost the remainder of this year. Our hope is, is that some wise decisions are made moving forward, and the wise decisions would be for any species where the data would suggest there's a limit to that population out there. And I'm going to give quillbacks as the one example in our letter, but there's also the copper, and then also the china. GLI had a closure already. We have to throw back and descend, but to have those as a request for a zero-bag limit, so we don't make this mistake again. I think it's very hard for the citizens of Delnor County to just look north 20 miles and see a thriving economy that is still fishing for salmon and still fishing for ground fish, both recreational and commercial. And to have that impact to the entire state of California, it's not an issue at that point of populations. It's an issue of how we've managed the species over time, and more importantly, prioritize the data collection around it. My hope with this letter is to really continue to speak towards the significance of what has occurred here at the state level, not only to the Pacific Marine Fisheries Management Council, but in addition to the state of California Fish and Wildlife and the Fish and Game Commission that makes those regulatory seasons and decisions. So, this conversation for us as a board needs to be ongoing. I know there's a lot of people here in the audience that want to speak to this. I'll end it by saying I would like to make a motion to support the movement forward of this decision, and it doesn't necessarily have to be me being the one to go to this meeting in early November.
Thank you, Supervisor Howard. So, yeah, mentioning public comment. I'll go ahead and open up public comment at this time on this item. Do we have any public comment?
Two weeks, I need replacement.
We don't have the easiest chairs to get out of.
You're doing well, Andrea.
Thanks for being here with us.
My name's Andrea Spawn, and we've been bugging Chris and Joey to get to some of our little group meetings that we've been going to, and I'm just a recreational fisherman. Started getting together with Chris Heggness, Steve Huber. He's a charter boat captain. Chris Heggness is manager of England Marine, and we started looking into this and finding out that their data wasn't exactly accurate. They've based it all on sciences and not hook-and-line data. So, what I've learned a lot in that I've discovered that there is a PFMC, which is a Pacific Fisheries Management Committee. Never heard of them. Thought NOAA was only weather. Thought GAAP was... No idea. It's a ground fish advisory committee. Well, anyhow, every couple of months, they have a big, huge meeting, and this next meeting is going to be in Garden Grove in November. It would be really, really, really important and really helpful if a member of the board of supervisors did go down there to that meeting and speak. We are sending Chris Huber, or Steve Huber, down there. We're funding it ourselves. And one other point I also wanted to make about it is California only has 4% of the halibut quota, and we're working on that, too, where Washington and Oregon have 28% and 22%. If you could also put in that letter that we would like to get more halibut quota, it would continue our fishery for halibut until August. We had to close in July. So, I do have a budget, basically, of what it's going to cost us to send Steve Huber down there. It's not that much. It's only going to be like $1,700. So, it wouldn't cost the county a lot to do it. And then, the other thing is, if you guys do send somebody down there, the best time from my advisors for them to go would be Friday, November 3, which would be when the opening comments are. My advisors have said it would pull more weight if they went then. Now, if they could also stay until Saturday, November 4, and Sunday, November 5, which is ground fish subcommittee meetings, and they can speak on those, that would also help. But the biggie and the most important one would be Friday, November 3, opening comments.
Very good. Thank you, Andrea, for the information. It's much appreciated. Any other public comment? Okay, close public comment at this time. We've already had a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, but we have not chosen that specific board member. It is my personal belief that the two that are the deepest into this should be considered, but I don't know your guys' availability, Chris and Joey.
Is it possible to just leave it flexible until we can have some consensus on it?
Biting down the days.
Yeah.
See what's available.
I guess that would be easy enough to do, say one or the other, Supervisor Borges or Supervisor Howard.
That would be my recommendation, that a member from that committee, that group, and that they can battle it amongst themselves as to who's...
You guys can ruffle someone else.
Who's available and what time.
Yeah. That would be fine with me. I think that's appropriate for this action item. So, let's go ahead and leave it at that. And Kylie, will you pull that vote, please?
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes.
My only additional comment on this, you know, the financial impact that their actions have taken to Delnor County have been devastating with closures and short seasons, and, you know, as we lost more and more of the salmon season, it's driven our other fishing components, like the short, near-shore fishing component, has become more of an economic driver for our community, because with a shortened season, it's brought more sports fishermen out to our waters, and then their closure for that is, again, one more blow to the fishing industry and to our community, that we need to send somebody to fight for us.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Do we have any legislative or budget issues? We do not. Okay, I believe I've got everything, Kylie. Thank you for keeping track. And with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting until our next regularly scheduled meeting, October 24, 2023.